Thank you, please be seated. So, those of you who don't know me, my name is Chris Darszewski, I am the town moderator here in Dudley. Trial and charge are beginning tonight, asking Ms. Smith to come up to certify the warrant, just a few reminders. First and foremost, thanks to everyone for coming out this evening for our special town meeting on this October 21st evening. I anticipate the evening will be a simple yet powerful example of our democracy in action. A couple of reminders related to that, please check the website for the town of Dudley. If you are interested in learning about our current election information, the upcoming election in November. Our early voting is open and all the information we need about all aspects of the election is available there. Relative to tonight's meeting, any visitors who are not registered voters in the town of Dudley, should be seated down here in the front left, front two rows. That does include personnel who may be speaking who are not residents of the town. And as a reminder, we do have two members of town council who are in attendance this evening. They may be consulted at any point during the evening by myself or the Board of Selectmen or the FAA. Michelle Rendazzo and Maggie Kershaw seated down here in the second row. We will also have Highway Department Associate Building Commissioner and Stormwater Agent Jeff Murray, he'll be speaking, as well as Lieutenant Police from the Dudley Police Department. If there is anyone else who represents a petition article tonight who is not a resident of Dudley, make sure that you're down front and I'll recognize you when appropriate. Rodrigo is jumping in and getting started. As a reminder, only residents or agents of the town may speak at our meeting tonight. No hats or hoods are permitted per town bylaw, except for active duty military, police, or fire personnel. Please ensure that heads are uncovered. All members of the town meeting must be seated during the proceedings. So if you are standing at the back, find your way to a seat and remain there until it's time to head on out. In order to speak tonight, you must be recognized by me. It's a very simple process. We've got a microphone in the center aisle. If you do wish to speak or have a question, please just raise your hand. I'll do my best to move from left to right, front to back of the auditorium in the order that I see hands raised, and will ask you to approach the microphone. Once you do approach the microphone, please state your full name and your residence, so that way we can get that entered into the record. And questions, if you do have questions during the proceedings, you may ask them through the chair. Please don't direct questions to any individuals in the audience, any individuals seated with our Board of Selectmen or FAA. All questions come through the chair and an appropriate member of our boards will answer, if possible. Please maintain appropriate decorum during the meeting. We don't permit back and forth banter. And we have a high level of sophistication relative to cheers and jeers. We're here to go ahead and participate in the democratic process with the same end goal. Ensure that Dudley has a very positive future, and we can disagree, but we must do it appropriately with civility. I'll do my best to adhere to Robert's Rules of Orders, which rules this meeting along with the information in the Dudley Town and Dudley bylaws. If I make a misstep, apologies, I'll do my best to correct it and keep the meeting moving forward as we usually do. Would we like to do clicker tutorial first? Or do we...? Yep. Okay, we'll do a clicker tutorial. Most of you have been to town meeting in recent years where we've adopted the use of clickers as opposed to voice or hand votes. We have a very simple process. Our first question tonight, beyond this test question, may require a little bit of patience. Our first question usually has a little bit of a delay associated to it. We're gonna go ahead and practice how to use the clickers right now. Really only have to pay attention to two buttons on the clickers. If you take a look at them, the top left row, number one, A, and the middle top row, two, B. Those are the two buttons that we typically use tonight. If you're gonna vote in the affirmative for an article, you'll vote yes, that's button number one. If you're gonna vote in the negative or opposition to the article, you're gonna vote two, which is B or no. You'll hear the transition between one, A, one, yes, two, A, two, B, uh, B, no, throughout the night. Just understand, one is yes, two is no. If you push the wrong button, no worries. If you push button one and you meant to vote no, as long as you re-click the button before the timer has expired, your vote will change to whatever you choose. And so, no worries at all with respect to missing voting, you have plenty of time to correct. And at the end, please return these, these are very tiny, but they're also very expensive. They'll do nothing for you at home, and they'll only give more offense. That's really about it with the clickers. Shall we do our first question? Alright, so clickers in the hand, left or right, whatever you prefer. I prefer the left hand with my right thumb. Uh, what was the question? Oh, is today Monday, October 21st of 2024? Is today Monday, October 21st of 2024? Move this question to a vote, all in favor are agreeing, A, and all opposed, B. We have fifteen seconds. Notice in the bottom right on the screen, we've got a countdown there, which will start any time. Go ahead and practice. Those of you who don't know, middle school principals, so I'm used to a lot of problems occurring with technology and you just roll with it. Ah, there we go. So the fourteen, the thirteen. Play around, change your vote for what the day is today, so you can get back to the correct response before the timer expires. And we'll see how many folks know it's October 21st of 2024. Alright, that's not bad. Not registering, so we had a few problems, okay. Alright, we're gonna re-up that, we're gonna go ahead and check it again. So the test question again is today, October 21st of 2024. We've got about ten seconds left. It's gonna be all good in a moment. Hey, everybody, it's not a clicker problem, it's actually, it seems to be a receiver problem. So, you can come grab a seat, switching out clickers is not gonna do anything for us. We usually start the show about nine minutes behind schedule, and we're still at about a minute before that approaches, so we're actually gonna be on time.
Look at you go!
How's it going?
Okay, everybody, we're gonna give the test question one more try. In just a moment, we'll go ahead and see that test question, and we'll ask you to go ahead and cast your vote. We have a backup plan if I get a thumbs down, but I'm confident we'll have a thumbs up. Let's be positive. Here we go. Alright, okay. The test question was, is today October 21st of 2024? One for yes, two for no. No go. Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna go ahead and hold those clickers, just set them down on your lap, and we're gonna go old school tonight. We will go ahead and do voice votes if we need. Remember, procedurally, I can call it a voice vote. Most of our articles require a majority, it should be pretty clear. Two-thirds votes require a two-thirds voice, that should be pretty clear. The one question that we may need some help on is our ninety percent article, but we'll talk about that when we get there. I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, you ready? Alright, so at this time, Ms. Smith, please join me up here to certify the delivery of the warrant. Thanks, Ms. Smith. Can you certify the return of the warrant? Alright, our first, our order of business is requesting through unanimous consent before we jump into the articles, to suspend our typical rule that's outlined in Dudley bylaw in Robert's Rules of Order, of a ten-minute time limit on speakers per article, and adopt a maximum of five minutes or two separate visits to the microphone per article, not to exceed five minutes in total per article. Is there any opposition to that rule being suspended tonight? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll jump right into Article One. See if the town will vote to hear and act on the recommendations of the Board of Selectmen in the Finance Appropriation and Advisory Committee, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayon?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Good evening, Finance Committee recommends that you pass Article One as written, and I so agree.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion for Article One. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on Article One. All in favor, aye? All opposed, nay? Unanimous. Article Two, FY 2025 amended budget to see if the town will vote to determine the sums of money the town will raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to defray the charges and expenses of the town and provide for a reserve fund or funds, determining the compensation for elected officials and including debt and interest for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayon?
Finance Committee recommends that you pass Article Two as written in the warrant, and I so agree.
Article's been made and seconded, discussion for Article Two. Seeing none, we'll move Article Two to a vote. All in favor, aye? All opposed, nay? Unanimous. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds with a sum of three thousand five hundred eight dollars and eighteen cents from free cash to pay unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayon?
The Finance Committee recommends you pass Article Three as written, and I so agree.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion for Article Three? Yes? So why hasn't it been, why have bills haven't been paid? What is the interest rate? And what was the middle question? Kind of these fees associated to the payment?
I'll defer that to...
Mr. Carmianni?
Good evening. Rich Carmianni, Treasurer Collector, Forty-Nine Airport Road. First question, why do these appear? You're closing your general ledger as of seven fifteen, so it's likely a timing issue. No expenses coming in, go through income of your funds, and you pay them when they come in. If on seven sixteen, the general ledger is closed, it's a timing issue, it's brought forward. So what if, what if a bill in fiscal twenty-four has moved into free cash today, and you're paying the bill later? To address any late fees, traditionally, consideration is given to the municipalities. It's not money under credit wire, it's a past due bill. It, it's normally looked to be paid as opposed to something going forward. And it's a timing issue, you shouldn't pay a fiscal twenty-four bill in fiscal twenty-five. This is the DLs, the DOR's preferred way of getting a bill paid. So the net ends up being zero. As far as an interest rate, to pay this, maybe a little more specific on interest rates?
I don't believe so. These are not all of the submissions for the Treasurer Collector's Office. Again, courtesy issues would be granted towards municipalities, I think I can cite it, but... If the warrant was in the gate before the House of the Town of Dudley gets slapped tax, I mean, there's a, there's a reciprocity courtesy for, for this, or, or a permanent submission to the town. So I, I don't believe there is, there's a late fee or a tax on this. So it sounds like it's not a bill that was on my coffee table, I got stuff shoved onto the TV guide and I forgot to pay, and now I have a late fee penalty. It's related to the closing of the books on FY twenty-four, and the bill came in after the closing. Thanks. Any other discussion for Article Three? Alright, seeing none, this does require a nine-tenths vote, so the nay vote on this will be particularly important. All in favor of supporting Article Three as written, aye? All opposed, nay? That was fantastic, I was really actually worried about this. That was unanimous. So let's keep this going for the two-thirds articles, and we'll be in really good shape. Article Four, establish compensated absence reserve to see if the town will vote to accept the provision of Mass General Lodge after thirty, subsection thirteen D, establishing a reserve fund hereby known as compensated absences reserve for the future payment of accrued liabilities due to, due to any employee or full-time officer of the town of Dudley whose salary is derived from general unappropriation upon the termination of the employee or full-time officer's employment, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayon?
Finance Committee recommends that you pass Article Four as written, and I so agree.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Sullivan, copy that. With the impression of the person who made the motion, can we strike termination from the next to the last, excuse me, sentence of termination of employee, to put the phrase instead separation of service of the...
So, did everybody understand what Select consultant made a statement on? He's asking to remove the word termination and put in the words separation of service as a scrupulous error, essentially meaning separation of service is the conclusion of service on, um, amicable terms. No? Mr. Dozeman?
Good evening, folks. State law requires that if there's accrued with among those paid benefit leaves such as vacation, any separation of service will require to pay after that. So it doesn't matter whether it's amicable or unamicable, it's just simply whether they retire, or they need to go for another job, or whether there's financial cost termination. And that's what this fund is intended to cover, both those payments that are required by law to be paid.
Thank you. Mr. Mayon?
Do you want me to amend my motion, or...?
No, I think it's, it's fair for treat the word termination, replacing it with separation of service as a scrupulous error. I think that was the original intent, was to write that problem. Any additional discussion on Article Four? Hearing none, put Article Four to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Article Five, fund compensation absences reserve to see if the town will vote contingent upon the passage of Article Four in the 2024 October 21st special town meeting warrant to transfer the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars from free cash into the compensated absences reserve, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayon?
The FAA recommends you pass Article Five as written, and I so agree.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion for Article Five? Yes? Mr. Mayon?
Um, basically anticipation of, uh, some penalties.
Additional questions for Article Four, Article Five, or discussion? Seeing none, put Article Five to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? That is unanimous. Article Six, cyclical inspections to see if the town will vote to appropriate from free cash some fifteen thousand dollars to fund the cost of the recertification of real estate and personal property values for FY 2028, as required by the Commonwealth Department of Revenue. Mr. Mayon?
The FAA recommends you pass Article Six as written, and I so agree.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion for Article Six? Yes?
Ms. Burke, Principal Sussar, Seventh Page Land Dudley. This is reported incorrectly, it's not cyclical inspections, this is a master evaluation that's done every five years. So can we change that, or do we need to change that?
So it's the, it's kind of the title of the article as opposed to the substance of the article?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We'll make that adjustment. Mr. Mayon?
What was the exact wording?
I don't think we need to make an adjustment on the floor, it's just, it's more just the description of the article. The substance of the article, so okay. Yes? Sir, if you can speak into the microphone directly so I can at least hear what you're trying to convey? Mr. Shinaki, we face the front. All questions and comments are directed through the chair. The intent of the article is to go ahead and, and to cover the cost of recertification of the real estate property values in the town. Well, there's no guarantee that it's a raise of taxes. In some opinions, in my personal opinion, is if we continue to make decisions, with this town, our property values are gonna go down. Mr. Signovich?
Gary Signovich, Airport Road. I want to point to the last piece of this article that Mr. Mayon had referred to the motion. As required by the Commonwealth's Department of Revenue, this isn't us. You point your finger at us like we're doing this, like we're trying to take money from you. Please let me finish. I let you speak, please let me speak. As required by the Commonwealth's Department of Revenue, this is a requirement from the state. This isn't something that we dreamt up on our own, it's a requirement from the state. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Signovich. Mr. Shinaki, if you, okay, do you have time? I'm sorry, we're talking... Yeah, I'm questioning, we're, we're talking about Article Six. With all due respect to your opinions on other elements that we're discussing, this is specific to the fifteen thousand dollars of free cash.
And those people, fifty people, that represent twelve thousand people in Dudley. I'm just talking to TV people, I'm not talking to them. They just raised funds, they could raise. How, why are you doing it? You have no... You go to church, then you take all your group in and then you throw people for to ignore, brother boy? What can the people have? You just destroy town of Dudley.
All right, Mr. Shinaki, I appreciate it, we're happy to take this conversation offline. We're bringing it back to Article Six right now, and yeah, that's where we're gonna be right now. Article Six, any additional discussion? Seeing none, move Article Six to a vote, all in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous. Article Seven, Playground Grant to see if the town of Dudley will vote to borrow over the sum of seven hundred four thousand four hundred and ten dollars or other such sum to make repairs and expand the usable area of the upper fields located at Richard Carney Senior Memorial Playground, including any incidental and related costs with the exact boundaries thereof to be determined and to dedicate such land for active recreational purposes under Mass General Lodge Chapter forty-five, section fourteen, and to meet such appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow such sum under Mass General Lodge Chapter forty-four, subsection seven or eight, or any other source of authority, and to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit on behalf of the town of Dudley applications for any and all grants deemed available and/or necessary under the Urban Self-Help Act three oh one CMR five point zero zero or otherwise, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any and all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary to or appropriate on behalf of the town to effect said project or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayon?
Finance Committee recommends that you pass Article Seven as written and isolated.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion for Article Seven? Mr. Mayon?
Just want everybody to be aware of that, a park grant was issued. That grant, uh, once, uh, once issued, does not have to be paid back, it's approximately five hundred ninety-six thousand, four ninety-six, four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars to offset the cost of-
Thank you. Additional discussion, Article Seven? Yes, Mr. Shinaki? And then to the back.
Seven thousand thousand, right? How much liability you guys, uh, gonna have to pay for that place? It's not a money, it's unsafe, you telling me some fly with rats when I'm there? For small kids, you go there and you spend seven hundred thousand? Are you joking? You joking? This is, this is unreal what you doing? You, you gonna bring thousands of illegal immigrants to Dudley, right? And they gonna play in that space, but I'm there, I, I tell you. I went the day to Pine Street. This, you took, was burned house no tire go. And you put basketball, basketball court there, it's all damaged. Nobody play in that place, standing for years, and same thing happen here. I understand hundred thousand for swings or whatever, you, you spent already so much money, seven hundred thousand?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
So don't call me to the exact penny. The amount was seven oh four four ten. The grant is four ninety-six, that is a grant, it's not a loan, it's not anything that has to be paid back. So the net amount is approximately twenty-eight thousand four, four hundred and ten. Twenty-eight, twenty-eight thousand four hundred and ten dollars. A public hearing was held several months back with the design engineer, I apologize, I have a little cold going on. It was well attended, we had probably fifty or sixty children there with their parents, their family. If you've ever been to another town with a splash pad in summertime, it's a, a central point for kids and their parents to go cool off. We already have the playground, we have the land, there's no land acquisition. It's adjacent to the police department. There's someone to say something on, about homes that are gonna take over or something, not here, we said before, that's not true. The bottom line is the debt amount is twenty-eight thousand four hundred and ten dollars to have a nice safe, modern playground for the children to play in this town. Just as a side, somebody more than is, not myself, graduated from that school, there's a school out there, and some of those swings were there for many schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Yes, sir.
Jerry Frank Cosman, Road Dudley. Um, I think this is a great idea, but I said one question when you said the grant doesn't have to be paid back. Um, are there any conditions such as the ones we ran into with the library where we don't need certain criteria or we'll have to pay back this grant in the future? Is there anything that you know about regarding this?
Mr. Sullivan?
I'm administrator, just, it's not like the library wasn't borrowed from, I forget the fund, the coal station, you know, but that was different, that was, the library had a stay of library for twenty years, it was not an unfettered grant, where they just immersed a check upon us doing your steps of having a park design, that's- the end result of all the work we did wasn't, it is, it's a no strings, no frozen fates, you get the money. Mr. Camagnani can probably talk about it better than me, how we apply that money, but it's just a straight grant and no payback.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Yes, down front and then to the left. And then to the back.
Hi, Smithley, Nine Foot Drive. Do we know what the yearly upkeep cost is going to be and what that's gonna do for us as the town goes? Is it gonna increase our taxes every year because that year it's gonna be more expensive to upkeep it? Ms. Quinone?
Hi, Agent Kirkmore, seventy-nine West of the York Recreation Committee. So, we were presented with this a couple months ago, we did some research on it, and we're gonna do it today. Just to answer a couple of the questions, it is gonna be safe, it's, we should supply, all equipment is supplied for municipality. Hence the reason why it's not just a seventy thousand dollar playground. It's not like you can go out and just buy a swing set, there are certain standards that have to be met. That's why the grant was applied for, so that we can reduce the cost so that we have the most normal effect on the town with the safest equipment and providing the best that we could for the town. In relation to the maintenance costs, we've done research on that, the maintenance costs are believed to be about forty-six thousand dollars a year during the peak months, with the research that we've done contacting other facilities. And also, the Recreation Commission is also looking at using this facility, the added space once it's there, to as ways of bringing in revenue to the town, eventually bringing in farmers markets, other ways to help fundraisers to offset the cost of this playground, which will benefit the children. Um, Mr. Sullivan took some of that under away. That, again, it was all presented at a selectmen's meeting, the boards were in the town hall for several months and all, no different events. Um, selectmen's meeting, everything, put the public to boast their input on. Also, you had all the children there to see the different types, to see what the people of the town would actually like. That's how the design came up, it was the one that was voted upon by the town, by the people. And then also, what type of playground equipment we wanted there was voted on, again, at a selectmen's meeting, by the people. It's not something that just a committee came up with, this was all done to everyone in town to place their input. I know that some of the concern has been about parking. So, as it says in the article, it's the upper area of the town hall where the fenced-in area is currently that is where the playground is being proposed for in that area. So it will not affect any parking for the senior center because there will be parking at the area of the playground. It will affect the upper town hall parking lot, which if you go through there on any given day, there's probably one or two police, at least a police vehicle is parked there. There's never a parking lot on that number. Just to answer, I know some of the questions have been-
Thanks, Ms. Quinone. So to answer the original question about four to six thousand per year potentially. We had one hand up before, Mr. Fox, yes, uh, yeah, on the aisle up there. Oh, yep, middle, and back then, Mr. Fox. No, you're good.
Good evening, Brian Menkort, eighteen Farley Road. Uh, a couple questions, I, I think this is a great idea, but we need some more information. Uh, what's the liability insurance cost or something like this? Who can use the playground as it Dudley residents only? Uh, I think those are four questions that need to be answered before we move. I know it's only three hundred thousand dollars, I say that. If you have a coupon, it doesn't mean you're gonna go buy the product, just because we got a grant it doesn't mean we need to spend the money. Just like we know some information, I think if we were more prepared with the information regarding this, it's the insurance policy, who can use the park, it's open to all residences outside of the community. I'd like to know more about that information.
Thanks. So, Ms. Quinone, liability insurance and who can access?
Sir, because it is a state-funded grant, it is open to anyone, you cannot restrict the use. It is open to any, to any person from any town, any surrounding community. Um, as for liability, if I remember correctly, if I'm wrong, what I believe has been discussed is that the liability isn't going to be anything additional than what the insurance for the playground or the beach currently, it's not like we're adding a roller coaster or anything of an extreme nature, it's gonna still be the same liability insurance that we paid for the previous playground.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Fox?
Peter Fox, twelve Ridge Drive, Dudley. If this article were to fail, would we lose the grant? Yes.
The answer is a-
There's a huge risk of losing a four hundred and something thousand dollar grant if this article fails. So for two hundred eighty thousand dollars to the town of Dudley, we keep the grant money and gain a playground.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, sorry, I bounced over, you guys take it.
Grace Stevens, uh, Mason Road. Then my question is, do we make it? And obviously, I can't answer the question of other people wanting from other towns to four hundred ninety thousand dollars. There's a lot of money, but to maintain, uh, people in town, we have projects in town that, uh, is given by, to make the lines, to make sure that the zebra is on the power, it stays, it's a liability right now to these old ones that you can't maintain it, so why would you own a car if you can't maintain it? The town beach, I park there all the time, it's like, it's trash, it's a big stuff, you know? Nobody maintains it, I, I don't think you can, very town around for free. Me, I have to pay for a lot. I have to be for you. We could rent it, uh, adjacent town, maybe do that. And I'll bring my grant, it's over there, uh, I'm gonna have a fund, and, uh, I can, we'll get the grounds, we can give it to the rest of the town. That's all, that's the third one for town.
Thank you. Ms. Quinone, if you'd like to come back around to that.
Sir, the grant is not transferable to any other town, it is given directly to Dudley because we have the entire, the very, the sign applied for it. Um, surrounding towns do have, um, it says, better playgrounds than what we have up in Dudley. Very nice playgrounds, surrounding towns have splash pads. This is to benefit the people, the children of the town of Dudley, the families of the town of Dudley, and it would be a playground, you have a splash pad, you can be in the area in the back, there's some small walking trail, there are kids who ride bikes. It isn't just a playground, it is the community's center of the town and the goal is in the future is to, like I said, to use other areas for farmers markets, things that do not cost anything, but that will benefit the town.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shane?
Janet Shane, Rocky Road. Um, the thing about the playground, and just to eat back off of what Jen just said. It seems like every year, people want more to do in town, more things to do with their kids, more things to do with their families, um, more things to just go out and do in general. This is relatively a small investment that we'll be able to use for a long time. We're talking about two hundred and eight thousand dollars that the town has to put forward for a massive project. I mean, in, in my estimation, the fact that most of it, a sizable amount of it is being covered by a grant is a win-win to get better amenities in town that we can use across the board.
Thank you. Uh, yes, sir, then, Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, yeah, I remember, would you, Michaelia, Michaela, House number four. Question regarding the design, I think some, uh, part of the thing they did is, some people think it's a really good idea, and some people think it's a really bad idea within the scope of the playground is a splash pad. Now, people say, oh, we got the beach and, and we don't need this, this, this splash pad kind of part of this, which there's concerns from people that, you know, lots of tradesmen that I've talked to, just that there's long-term issues with, uh, with maintenance, there's the, the question of, well, where's the water coming from? We can't water our lawns, but is there just gonna be water running like full time? What does that cost? Clearly, it's not a good system that just circulates the same, you know, water, I would imagine. Um, and then, so I guess the question is, uh, if by voting yes for this, are we locked into this design? Because truthfully, uh, I'm of the opinion that this might be a great idea, but farther down the line, this splash pad, like Mr. Quinone said, it's gonna fall into some of these things that we traditionally aren't good stewards of, like the beach, like the gazebo, like the existing playgrounds, I'm sure things wear out, but we're also traditionally haven't been great stewards of things uh, in our town, and so I think some of the concern is that, looking farther down the line, you go, oh, well, this, this piping needs to be dug up, this water issue, this, is this vote today blocking in this design? Or is there some discussion where there's like a meeting in the middle? Cause a lot of people are probably gonna vote no, just because of the splash pad. And so, is there wiggle room or by us saying yes, are we locked into what? And no disrespect, a bunch of ten-year-olds decided they wanted it, we decided, we said, do you want a chocolate factory? They say yes, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shane?
Janet Shane, and, um, so we actually, that question came up when we were discussing this at our September twenty-sixth meeting. One of the, um, FAA members brought up the same question about the splash pad. Um, and the answer that we received from, uh, Mr. Ruda is that the grant is not dictating what goes into the playground. So even though we had, you know, a meeting in January where a lot of kids came in and talked about the things they wanted to see, it's not set in stone until we actually break ground. Um, so that splash pad can still be taken out and we can put something back in. There is still time, if you, even if you vote in the affirmative tonight, there is still time to change that design to something that might be less of a worry from a water standpoint. Um, but there will be time to do that after tonight. Um, we won't even be able to have the conversation if this doesn't pass.
Thank you, Mr. Shane. Yeah, Mr. Sullivan, next. Passed, okay, uh, no, uh, wow, oh, Ms. Smith. Thanks, I've never looked to my left, I'm so sorry, Laura.
I would urge everyone to vote in favor of the playground tonight. This has been going on for several years, when we first came to the town meeting asking for money for it, it was three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, two or three years later, the cost has actually gone down. Without the grant, it's only two hundred and seven, which I know is still a lot of money, but the investment that we have, we have to offer something to the children in this town. If they wanna use a playground during the school day, you can, you can use a playground out of school while school's in session. Um, it's a great investment. The Women's Club put a whole year into doing fundraising because at that town meeting where, um, we brought it up and it was rejected, people wanted us to go for a grant, so the town went for a grant. So the town went for a grant, got awarded the grant. It's been guaranteed we'll get that money. The Women's Club did fundraising for a year, did a great job, donated the money towards us. And there was Cub Scout groups that did fundraising on their own. So the children put an investment into this too. And I just think we've done everything that we asked them to. We really owe it to them, to this town, to put some money back into our town so we can have something to be proud of. As far as other towns coming in and use it, we go to other towns and use their things. The library, it's not just Dudley people that come to the library. So it's nothing new, that concept. I think it's a great thing. I do think there's others around too. So to think that they're all going to flock to Dudley, I don't think that's going to happen. It will make it a lot easier for Dudley parents to go to someplace close. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Fox, then Ms. Canoyer, then the gentleman in the blue orange. And then to that corner. I don't remember that somebody's done.
Peter Fox, 12 Ridge Drive. I'm concerned, again, that if we vote no on this article, we lose the grant. Is it possible that we can amend this article to the amount of the grant and build a playground on that amount?
I'll let Ms. Canoyer take that despite my no in this answer. No, no, no. I think I'll be doing plenty of talking later.
So unfortunately, no, we are the town, the grant clause that they would convert seventy-four of the cost of the playground at the time, they're responsible for forty percent. So there's, you know, either way, do we get accepted as being responsible for the playground? If I could just make a comment about what we did to the splash pad. I completely understand it was a concern of the Recreation Commission, it was presented. And one of the things that we were assuming, sir, about how often is it going to run? Can we set a timer? You know, is it just going to be going off all day? There are a lot of regulations that we set in place where you can have it that operates during certain times of the day. But it does go on. This particular model, if it goes off, it goes off for like ten, fifteen minutes, then you know, it has to be happy. You have to make it in the afternoon if this is something that you're going to go with. And these are concerns of ours, we want to know more about it because, again, the splash pad, this is a big, a big deal. It's a bigger investment. And how long do we have? We can set the hours. We have timers to control it so that it's not going off at all hours of the day or it's not, the water isn't being used consistently on just one side. Thank you.
Uh, we were going blue on the orange. And when you approach Mike, please adjust the height so that you can speak right into it. You should be hearing me, hearing them at the back as you're hearing me. Okay? Thanks.
David Simonic, ninety-five B Mason Road. So what assurances do we have that if we said yes to this, that we would not just be stuck with the splash pad? You're saying we can change this down the road. Who's to say that once we say yes, you all just don't go forward with the splash pad and say, well, this is what they want, so this is what we're going to do? We had the vote on the school with roofing. And to my knowledge, the money was appropriated, but we never had any bids that we knew of. We didn't know what the final cost was going to be until it was done. To me, that's ridiculous. I don't put in a bid to have something done and then just say, okay, well, when you're done with the project, come to me with the bill and then I'll pay it. So what assurances do we have if we give the yay, that you'll actually look into other options and not just go, well, you all voted yes on this, we're moving ahead?
Mr. Sigurd.
Hello, Harry Sigurd, I'm a chicken. You asked a question. If this passes, I'm giving you my word, we will have a yay. You can laugh at me all you want. That's all I get off of you. Laugh all you want. Look, for, just to make sure the numbers are correct, because I've heard a couple of different numbers. The total cost is seven-hundred-and-four-thousand. Out-of-pocket for us would be two-oh-eight. If you want something different than the splash pad, we will talk about. We have a public hearing. We have at least money. Yeah, the kids came and picked out what they wanted and the parents voted. But if you don't want the splash pad, there won't be a splash pad. We can have some sort of a hearing. Redesign Recreation Commission as long as they're on board with that as well. We'll redesign. That's all. If you don't want a splash pad, we will get a splash pad, but don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. We've got a park with a tree growing. Nobody can use it. We've got to do something. And it's never going to be as cheap as this one.
But then why weren't there two options given? Instead of, we could have voted on that tonight. We could have had A, splash pad, B, non-splash pad.
We could also talk about a six-foot monkey bar versus a five-foot monkey bar. We're not entertaining the specifics of this plan. We're entertaining the funding mechanism to move forward with the plan to bring it to another, what I heard, public hearing about design. See, that's a whole separate element. And then after that, design is approved, we put it out to bid, we get bids on the contractor for the install at the maximum rate that we are funding tonight. That's the mechanism that we're moving through. I appreciate the question, but we can't get into, you know, a discussion of color schemes for the turf, which is essentially what we're doing with the splash pad.
But then it should have just been a vote on, do we want a playground? And then you could have came forth with, okay, we can do a splash pad with a playground or we can do it without the splash pad. But right now, all we're hearing is splash pad. So with no other plan in place, if we say yay, there is no assurance, in our eyes, that that would not, we'd be stuck with that.
Yeah, to Ms. Canoyer, and again, with all due respect, this was on town meeting floor. It was voted down with stipulation of raise funds. The Women's Club went out and raised, I can't remember the amounts, of thousands of dollars with a twenty-thousand-dollar anonymous donation on top. We went out and had Cub Scout groups raising money for this. We had other members of the community stepping up because town meeting floor directed a denial of that original request. So we did what we needed to do as a town and we're back here at this point. But again, this isn't a discussion about playground A design versus playground B design. It's about funding playground design at this cost. Ms. Canoyer?
Thank you. So this was just a presentation that was given to us from the, the engineering group putting in the biggest options, the best things that we could do for the town. When it came to the Recreation Commission, again, we had many reservations. We talked for many hours about the splash pad. At no point has a plan been voted upon by the Recreation Commission. This is now in the hands of the Recreation Commission. No plans have been voted upon because we don't know what the funding will be. It was just given a good plan to put out there for approval. Yes, there could have been other options, absolutely, but things are all interchangeable. Nothing is marked in stone. We will be having public meetings. If this warrant passes, we will be having public meetings as to what should be put in it, what is worth it, what is best for the town, what's best for the economy, what's best for everything, what will the kids enjoy the most? And not ask the kids hold it, but ask the parents, saying, looking at all the different options, saying what we think the kids will be enjoying and what the best we can give them for this price. And if the splash pad doesn't go into it and people don't want it, if that's the expression, then a splash pad doesn't go into it. Nowhere is it set in stone right now that there has to be a splash pad. It would be a great benefit for the town, but just to have a playground where we haven't had one in four years or so, it's worth it. You know, it would used to be so nice to hear the kids playing at lunch during the day when the moms could let the kids, we had the town hall and you hear the kids on the playground. And when you don't hear that anymore, it's out of us because it was, the old playground was used a lot and a lot by Dudley residents. Thank you.
Yes, it was. Uh, Mr. Brier, and then second gentleman in the blue. Ms. Hickey.
You know, coming to the drop by sixteen Flaxville Road, coming to the meeting, I really was undecided about this because I really didn't have the information, the details. But I'm hearing everything this evening. I'm unpointed to vote this. The disciple who came up here and gave the word, that man had never by his word to me. And his word, to me, carries a lot of weight. But when we look at the article as it's written, there's nothing here that actually addresses a particular client. It's the idea that the town, it's a token paper transaction where we're authorizing up to seven-hundred-and-four-thousand to be raised in order to create a playground. There's nothing about a particular client. And I guess my question is to the treasurer. It's my understanding, because I thought that Dudley Women's Club did a wonderful job, really kind of, you know, laying out a lot of the facts, that this will not affect the tax rate in any way. And that at the end of the day, that two-hundred-and-four-thousand is something that's already within the budgets. And so if the town treasurer could come up and confirm that, that would probably be my final vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Camianni? Hold on. Mr. Hickey, we're going to have Mr. Camianni come up just to address the direct question for Mr. Brier. Thank you.
So the question is, the two-hundred-and-eight-thousand being funded this year through taxes? Is that the question?
Uh, Mr. Brier, could you just clarify directly? Thank you.
The question is, even though we're authorized at seven-hundred-and-four-thousand, well, I borrowed seven-hundred-and-four, at the end of the day, that two-hundred-thousand, how are we paying that back? Is it over time or are we going to just pay off and run it off some? Thank you for the clarification. So the article, if passed, authorizes to borrow the entire amount or any lesser amount. So we go through and borrow all of the money and are refunded or are reimbursed our grant amount, that amount is only going to have the cost of the interest for the time borrowed. Think of it as a bridge loan if you're renovating your home. The town's obligation is two-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars. We authorize to borrow that over time or pay it in its completion next fiscal year. There's another factor on this. The, it's my understanding that we're going to have continued fundraising, that the maximum obligation is seven-two-hundred-thousand, being the programs, they've designated the town's portion to be two-hundred-and-eight. Not all of it needs to be paid from taxation. There are going to be some donations, whether they are small, whether they are large, and then whatever borrowing would make up the difference for it. So it's not completely without a town cost component, but the town's cost component's going to be minimized. And if they would at this time, there was a previous speaker, several back, talking about insurance liability. The town of Dudley has a schedule of value. There's an umbrella, one-million, three-million-dollar policy for the town of Dudley. They add it to the schedule of values, they start depreciating it, and if there's any damage to it, the deductible applies and the claim is paid. It's not specifically, we're adding something in the insurance bill is going to go up. There's just a general liability. Right now, the town of Dudley is insuring all of the personal property here. Indefining Dudley traffic gets the loss. It's a way of, not a homeowners policy, it's a municipal, it's commercial, uh, commercial insurance. So then in the event that Sharon's there, which you want to add, the school will suffer a loss. So there should be marginal increase in any for insurance costs. I wouldn't be able to speak to the fundraising to offset the two-hundred-and-eighty.
Thank you, Ms. Camianni. Mr. Sullivan, then Ms. Hickey.
So to go over the process again for a minute, we talked about the children. The children came, gave us their input with their parents. The vote that the board of selectmen took at the time was the design, potential design put forward by the engineer at Radnor, Radnor Enterprises, I think it was. So when that stepped into process, it went to the Recreation Commission who worked with Bill Skam of previous plan who's no longer here. The Recreation Commission finished up the work that had been started and our assistant town administrator and others worked on to get it. The time for the original questions would have been that meeting that the children were at, that was open to the public. That wasn't the final design, as the Recreation Committee chairwoman said, now your chance will come when they start holding their public hearing to actually button down the final design. This number here was the number we got from the engineer, which the grant is based upon. So and to go back to the gentleman who asked about the school's roofs, unfortunately, the school, the roof gets funded through the town meeting. Then you have to go to the school committee, watch their meetings to find out how they spend it or what they did for bids. This board, that board, nobody in this room, unless you're on the school committee, had anything to do with the actual projects for the roofs. Those questions have to be addressed to the school committee. You can't get the answer here, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Hickey, you've been waiting a while.
Just two comments. I have experience. When I worked as an electrician, the two different companies I worked for did a lot of projects, especially schools, homeworks projects. And I can tell you, we were always confronted with, okay, well, now this is going to cost more than we thought originally. We stop and then they have to go back and decide, okay, are you going to give us more money to do this or are we going to do away with this? Okay? Because I know from, I had Douglas High School, Tantascow High School, Worcester State Nursing Labs, things right in this area. They don't have their noise sound system that they really wanted. They don't have their theatrical lighting system that they wanted so bad. Tantascow, I'm not sure when we left there, they didn't have any of the industrial arts because, but they had their pool. Because that was the big thing. So the idea that they're just, we're going to just say, okay, we want you to build this and then they're going to run around and build something and say, oh, by the way, we need extra money. That's not how contracting buildings go. And the second thought I'd like to put in was that if you were somebody, didn't know the area, just came in from California, okay, you're looking to buy a house, you've got kids, okay, I can spend half a million dollars on a house. I come to Dudley, you tell me the schools are in trouble. Playground is condemned. Do I want to spend half a million dollars on a house in this town?
Thanks, Mr. Hickey. And then Mr. Fox. And then Mr. Maia. This is number three, Mr. Fox, I'm being kind tonight. Go ahead.
My understanding is, if we vote no on this, we lose the four-hundred-and-something-thousand-dollar grant and we wind up with nothing. Repeat that, we'll wind up with nothing. But two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, let's pass this article for the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Ms. Maia. The rest of the audience, be quiet down, please.
To the previous speaker, I think we were talking about possible cost overruns. That's kind of what we questioned this, but inside the plan is about ten percent of that number is contingency. So that's argument built into the seven-two-hundred-thousand. Also, if the article is defeated, just keep in mind that we do still have to tear the place down and dispose of it. So that would come up as an article in the future. future, uh, for the funding for that. I don't know what the exact cost of that will be, but it's, it's not very cheap, there's some materials in there that we just can't bring into the recycling center. Um, so that's gonna cost us some money too, so keep that in mind.
Yes, at the back, red glasses, yeah. Oh, hey, come on down. Oh, that's Mr. Frank.
I'd like to make a motion to move the article.
Motion's been made and seconded to move the article. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll move that article to, oh, all in favor of Article Seven to fund that, uh, playground, use the playground grant funds, all in favor, what's that? It's Article Seven there? Yeah, okay. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ooh, that's gonna be a little too close for two-thirds, but, um, we'll go ahead and do this the old-fashioned way. All in favor, your arms are about to get tired. Ms. Smith, can you take the left side? I'll take the right side. All in favor, aye? Hold your hands up tall, please. Your lawyer, a second. All opposed, please hold your hands up. Thank you, we'll be around momentarily. Uh, we had ninety-six in the affirmative, we had fifty-five in the negative, uh, we required a hundred and one in the affirmative, uh, the article has failed, required two-thirds vote, ninety-six and fifty-five. Uh, Article Eight, mitigation engineering and design. What's that, Mr. Jack? I'm sorry? Would you like, for what? Uh, no, we've moved on beyond the, we've moved on beyond Article Seven. We're, we're gonna have to come back around in another forum for that, the article's failed. It's fantastic, we'll have to come to Recreation Commission and Planning Board because the process will need to begin anew. Not at this time, we're moving on to Article Eight. To see if the town will vote to borrow the sum of nine hundred and twenty-six, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars and zero cents or other such sum to provide funding for the scope and design and engineering associated with providing a permanent solution to contaminated private wells within the Eagle Drive Fairway Avenue and surrounding neighborhood, including mitigation costs and capital infill testing and monitoring required pursuant to three-ten CMR forty point zero four-two-four dash forty point zero four-two-seven. And to meet such appropriation, the treasurer will, uh, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow such sum under and consistent with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, subsection seven or eight, or any other source of authority, and to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary to that purpose or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor.
Finance committee recommends you pass Article Eight as written, I saw.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion for Article Eight? Yes, sir. Yep. The only hand. Yes, sir.
It happened time the owner of he would write. I never gave you okay to go on my road and do whatever you want. Million dollar, for, for what? Are you crazy? I build those houses, almost thousands of houses there. In, I paid the engineer, before we started the data area to develop, we paid the engineer for the whole subdivision, fifty thousand, was four years ago, but was included water and sewage lines. And then you shut me down with the water line, sewage line, that's your problem now. You got sixty thousand, sixty houses polluted. We cannot sell those houses, and are you telling me it's common? Million dollars, I can bring you my engineer for fifty thousand, he can do that job, okay? You got the momma saying, oh, who, who using million here, we can hear? You guys, I don't know. Millionaire, you taking people money on retirements, spending million dollar for, you have no rights to go and even sell engineer there. You have no my permission to go there. What, you ask the people for million dollar? I can sell my engineer there, measure that stuff. Was the, I still got old plans, I can use that. I was, and then we gonna count with seventeen million? I can fix the trouble, that line for, for ten million or seven, half of the price. But it's big project, you got electric wire there, you got rats all over the place, you miss pressure equipment, you guys screw up, you do that, that lay down side. That down should be removed from that area and put another side in that, like, try some place there. It's nothing gonna be, it's leaking all over like, it's spreading all over the town. That's what is happening to that. They never, never was stopped, because it leaks. I see some, uh, the one lady bought house on Eagle Drive, this year in January, and she's selling. And I, I talked to the buyer's headlong, Schusby, whatever, I talked to her, I asked one question, did the real estate told you about the water problem? And she said, yes. And I will not, I will not buy that water problem, that house. That's mean sixty houses we cannot sell. And this big, I am talking to some lawyers now, class actions sue against town, and I'm sorry for people, because somebody gonna pay for that. But no way you have to kill me on the Eagle Drive before you put equipment there. I'm telling you, darling.
Thank you. Just additional discussion for Article Eight. Seeing none, move Article Eight to a vote, this does require a two-thirds vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Get ready for those arms, my friends. Uh, all in favor, please, hold your hand up. All opposed?
Do we need an exact count of how many is declared, two-thirds, based on what I see?
Uh, based on what I see, it's gonna be, uh, close to a majority, not two-thirds, that motion is failed. Article Nine. To see if the town will vote to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from Water Department retained earnings account number listed to the following accounts. Forty thousand dollars to Water Overtime account number listed, twenty-eight thousand dollars to Water Standby account number listed, twelve thousand dollars to Water Primary Operator account number listed, ten thousand dollars to Secondary Water Operator account number listed, and ten thousand dollars to Water Operator account number listed. Mr. Mayor.
Finance committee recommends you pass Article Nine as written, I saw.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded, sorry, discussion for Article Nine. Yes, Mr. Zakowski.
Mr. Zakowski, Katherine Street Chair of the Water Service Mission. Uh, these transfers are being made in anticipation of collective bargaining agreements that are in current negotiation and should be wrapped up soon. If you don't have the money in there, then we're not gonna be able to be, to lead to the, of the contract.
Thank you. Additional discussion, Article Nine? Seeing none, all in favor, Article Nine?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Article Ten, St. Anthony Road Acceptance. To see if the town will vote to accept the layout of St. Anthony Road as a public town way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on the layout entitled, "St. Anthony Road, Dudley, Massachusetts, dated June twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four, prepared by B and R Survey Incorporated and marked attachment A and provided as a supplement to this warrant, as may be amended and placed on file with the town clerk as required by law and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain the fee to, and or easements in and or over said roadway and or such other access, utility, drainage, or other easements incidental or related thereto, for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Dudley or take any other action relative thereto." Mr. Mayor.
FAA will defer to the more slightly promoted.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion for Article Ten? Yes. And that's Mr. Frank.
Just for a point of information, usually this is deferred to the planning board, and why is it not done, why is it different this time around? Usually, the road acceptance, isn't it usually the planning board?
In my tenure up here, it hasn't been, it's been Board of Selectmen or Highway, uh, but if planning board needs to be consulted, I don't see a reason why at this point. Seeing no additional discussion for Article Ten, go ahead and move that to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Two-thirds passed, it's unanimous. Article Eleven, Animal Bylaw. Uh, prior to entering into this article, three unanimous consent for the like the articles in the remainder that are multiple pages, uh, three unanimous consent, I'd like to be able to dispense with the reading of the articles. Is anybody in opposition to that at this time for the remaining articles tonight? Yes. Is that for all the articles or just specific? Mr. Hickey.
Just plain guy, why do we license for dogs?
Oh, hold on, I'm asking three unanimous consent, if I could dispense with the reading of every word in this packet for the remainder of the evening. All right, all right, thank you. Uh, so three unanimous consent, I will dispense with the, I will avoid the reading of every word verbatim. Uh, so Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to amend, uh, chapter one-twenty-eight of Town Bylaws, section one-twenty-eight dash three H and one-twenty-eight dash eleven C five relative to the animal control, by deleting language shown as stricken through below and adding the bold language shown below in the text, no changes to section titles or take any other action relative thereto. Uh, those of you following along, this article moves over to page nine. This is, uh, Mr. Sullivan, the Board of Selectmen.
See a police lieutenant getting up, I appreciate it. Defer to the police department, but again, we had a public hearing, this was put forward by the police chief of town, not the Board of Selectmen, so the lieutenant, take it.
Thank you. I just need a motion. Motion to accept. And it's been seconded, thank you. Uh, Mr. Ennis, Officer Ennis, Lieutenant Ennis, been here for a while.
Basically, this is just gonna change the finance to be currently compliant with Mass Law and Control.
So moving, uh, the areas that are being stricken and, uh, we're going to add compliance with the state law. Okay, thank you. Yes?
Why do we need license for dogs?
Uh, state law requires that municipalities have animal control mechanisms.
I know you control the people like, like crazy, but you control, you won't let control their dogs, huh?
Yes.
Thousand dollars fine if you not register your dog, or you raid, thousand dollars fine. You gonna send cops to arrest that dog?
I think the point is, you know, and share that there's public safety and that we've got a mechanism to control the animals.
I, I like I told you, I know you control us like crazy, but why spend money and bureaucracy doing nothing, just riding all kinds of horses? Should be free, license should be free.
We can talk about license fees at some other point, this is about getting us our bylaws and compliance with state law.
They said if you rent, they find the thousand dollars fine. No, that's not for me, I, I know. How much you paying them by the hour, fifteen dollars? Camilla Harris is paying fifteen dollars for them, how much you paying them? That's my opinion, you know?
Noted, I, I get it. Any additional discussion for Article Eleven? Seeing none of Article Eleven to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Article Twelve, Solicitors' Bylaw. Uh, this is, well, uh, one of those articles where we'll not be reading verbatim. Uh, to see if the town will vote to amend the following general bylaw adopted under Article Sixteen of the May twenty-twenty-four Annual Town Meeting in accordance with guidance from the Attorney General's Office with revision stone and boldface type, or as stricken through below, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Sullivan and a member of the board. Any discussion for Article Twelve? Seeing none of Article Twelve to a vote? Oh, wait, oh, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move Article Twelve to a vote. Oh, wait. Oh, thank you. In my defense, your hand with the gray sweater was right in front of the lady with the shirt with the gray sweater, and I didn't see it. I'm still getting chuckles, so this can't be that bad for all of you. This is good. No, 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 my bad.
Joyce Narzinski, Lakeview Ave. My question is, why is it changed to nine P M? I don't want, I'm not gonna make during eight forty-five.
Yes, Lieutenant Ince.
Uh, this was, this change in hours from seven-thirty P M to nine P M was recommended by Town Council and through the Attorney General's Office.
What's the reasoning? Is it because we have to do it as a recommendation?
Mr. Sullivan.
I'll let Town Council take it a bit further.
Thank you, folks. Actually, there's a number of cases on the federal level that would str- have stricken down an earlier time limit as violating First Amendment. So, the Attorney General actually made that comment when they reviewed the bylaw that was passed at the last town meeting. It indicated that that had, again, has been struck down and would subject the town to potential liability by folks that are, um, still suffering.
That's, that's if it goes to court.
In my experience, it will. I mean, there's a number of, of groups out there that are very, they look at these things very closely. We tried it at seven-thirty, and the Attorney General came back and said that's a problem.
I mean, it gets dark after five P M for many months a year, and you're gonna have somebody walking through our neighborhoods possibly.
You compose no trespassing signs on the property. And no soliciting, no solicitation signs as well. I mean, you retain that right regardless of what the bylaw says.
I just think it's dangerous now, and that's my concern.
And, and, and I appreciate that. I mean, you know, honestly, this is what the case law is, and you're balancing the risk to having those types of lawsuits brought by, uh, organizations that are quite vigorous defenders of First Amendment rights, including those of solicitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Let me just count yours. Five, as it's described. So, does this mean that if it doesn't pass, then the town is opening itself up to, uh, a lawsuit?
Uh, yes. Thank you. Uh, is there any additional discussion for Article, uh, Twelve? Seeing none, we'll move Article Twelve to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
That's a clear majority. Article Thirteen. Uh, this is, as well, one that we're gonna move from Article Thirteen to Twenty, so I again thank you for that unanimous consent. Uh, we'll be moving to page nine to page Twenty. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town General Bylaws, Chapter Two Fifty-Four, with language deleted, shown as stricken through, and language added, shown in boldface, to bring the bylaw into compliance with the federal requirements in accordance with the two thousand and three the Admissible Stormwater System, M S four, permit, and to create a new enforcement authority known as the Stormwater Committee to further, and further to vote that the town may impose a lien upon real property for unpaid costs of abagements required hereunder, including administrative costs in accordance with General Law, Chapter Forty, subsection fifty-eight, or take any other action relative thereto. That was actually page Twenty-eight. Uh, Mr. Sullivan? Motion's been made and seconded for Article Thirteen. Uh, is there any discussion for Article Thirteen? Seeing none, we'll move Article Thirteen on the floor to a vote. All in favor of Article Thirteen?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, unanimous. Article Fourteen is a citizen petition. Uh, to see if the town will vote to amend the Dudley General Bylaws, Chapter Sixty-Eight, Article Two, Town Administrator, by amending Sections Sixty-Eight through eighteen, Sixty-Eight dash eighteen, Appointment, Annual Review, Other Activities, Section Sixty-Eight dash nineteen, Power and Duties, Sixty-Eight dash Twenty, Acting Town Administrator, Sections, uh, Section Sixty-Eight dash Twenty-One, Removal and Suspension as shown below with deleted language stricken through with added language in bold or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Mayor?
FAA will defer to the petition for motion.
Excellent. Uh, Mr. Breyer, thank you.
The screen is inactive. Was it Article Sixteen of May twenty-twenty-two? I think it just carried over from something else.
Oh, thank you. You happy?
Yeah. I'd like to make motion to, uh, accept the article with the following amendments. I'd like to make motion to amend the citizen petition, Section Sixty-Eight, eighteen, Appointment, Section A, by striking the following paragraph completely. And the paragraph that we stricken would be, in addition, any terms and conditions within the proposed contract, the Town Administrator's contract. Will the renewal contract must be consistent with previous Town Administrator contracts and approved by the Personnel Board as well as a majority of Board of Selectmen prior to execution. And I'd like to amend Section Sixty-Eight, nineteen, Powers and Duties by striking out the following words under the Personnel Board's direction. And amend Section Sixty-Eight, nineteen, Powers and Duties, Section A by striking out the following words and the Personnel Board. And that was after listening to the Labor Council with the reply, and some of them said that they had expressed previously.
So, motion to amend Article Fourteen as presented by, uh, Mr. Breyer. Do we have a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion on the amendment to the Town Administrator Citizen Petition? Seeing none, we'll move the, uh, question about the amendment. We are not voting on Article Fourteen right now. Uh, just unclear. Uh, all in favor of the amendment to the Town Administrator Citizen Petition?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, we had a motion on the floor and a second to discuss Article Fourteen. We just made the amendment, and we'll bring it back to the petitioner for, uh, discussion.
I'd like to ask everybody to support, uh, uh, to pass this bylaw. I did do some handouts. It fixes, you know, some minor genemises where it's each she, it's her, those type things. Uh, it does actually establish qualifications, uh, you know, going forward as far as educational experience. Uh, one of the big things is the removal. Currently, our bylaw has two-thirds of a five-person board, which stands up to eighty percent. Most towns are simple majority, so that language has been changed to simple majority for removal. Uh, the big thing, well, there's some, some other minor things, monthly financial reporting. The bylaw right now only requires the Town Administrator to report annually to the Board of Selectmen or at their discretion, and I'd really like the Board of Selectmen to have monthly updates, and whenever they ask, they'll legally edit. That's actually in the bylaw. But the big thing was, uh, the reason we got caught with this was the next article is the restoration of the Personnel Board. And in this, we needed to clearly, there was confusion about, you know, who, with the Human Resource Manager, whom they report to. And by adopting the amendments that we adopted, there is no doubt that there is no change in the recording structure to the, the H R manager within the town. It would still be the Town Administrator. And, uh, they would not be reporting to the Personnel Board in any way. So, that is why that has changed, and we basically changed the Town Administrator from Personnel Director to his or her designated to be the new Human Resource Manager for the town, and that's actually in the bylaw. So, that's pretty much it. We'll go to supports. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breyer. Mr. Sullivan?
I have a question for the petitioner. Do the budget process in town, the Town Administrator is responsible to present the budget. He takes the data and the numbers given to him by the Treasurer, Collector, the Assessor, the Accountant. Why would, well, why would we, through the Town Administrator, be responsible for monthly, which we, we can do? But wouldn't that be falling under the Treasurer Collector, who is our CFO of the town? And you can get the numbers from the Town Accountant to a macho, and she has up on her website. But we don't have, why don't the Selectmen, I'm sure Mr. Rudick can question, but the raw data, the numbers that your monthly financial report would require would be, I think he has to somebody else to provide it. So, in that, that instance, you're kind of setting Administrator and/or the Board up to fail, 'cause if we can't get numbers, we can't present. Somebody comes in and says, "You didn't present for January. It's the second week of February. We may not have the numbers." I don't think that should fall on the Town Administrator. I think that CFO, the Treasurer Collector, who's an elected position.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Breyer, the question was directed back to you.
In business, every day when I walked into the office, I had a report that showed me what my sales were, what my expenses were, what my income was, and I knew every morning how I was trending versus last month and last year, you know, with past five years. And I think having those tools and that ability as a board is beneficial in order to understand the, you know, the environment that's occurring around you. So, for instance, today, if I ask you, uh, compared to last year in our budget, are we running ahead in our revenue? Are we running ahead in our expenses compared to last year? And we've got the fiscal twenty-five budget out there, or twenty-four budget. How do we stay in comparison to the forecast? And as leaders, you need to have that information available to you with the Town Administrator's role in years to facilitate that by collaboration with the Accountant, with the Treasurer. You guys determine the information you need to get accurate reports. Right now, it's limited to just once a year. This gives you the ability to get it monthly or at your discretion. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I think, I think the petitioner and I are on the same page. I just think that maybe the Treasurer can come up and speak on it. I just think to put the burden one hundred percent on us, that, that... I can ask anybody for information. I'm not saying I don't get it, and the Town Administrator can too. But I, I can't, as an elected official, or the Town Administrator, whoever that person may be, is reliant on somebody else providing him the numbers. And as most people know, the way the structure's set up in Dudley, yes, there's a lot of cooperation between boards. We are governed by elected positions, appointed positions, and volunteers. And when you elect another official, that person does not, I'm not saying that nobody does, though, don't take me my way. When you elect another official, that person is not obligated to respond to me as a Selectman. And they would, he probably will, or she probably will, or whoever it is. But I think the way the language is, is, was presented, it's setting the Town Administrator through the Board or the Board through the Town Administrator to fail if we can't get that monthly number. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Johnson?
Jay Johnson, Jonathan Pass. Uh, in regards to the article mentioned, I do not recommend moving forward with the article because I believe the concerns noted by Labor and Town Council in regards to potential conflicts with the master general laws and the lack of clear evidence for this would solve any recent current problems. We had a long discussion at two select meetings ago about that. We need professional staff focused on modern demands of human resources. When I go into the office, I expect my personality issues to be resolved by professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, back to Mr. Breyer, then to Mr. Shane.
The town has functioned successfully for decades with the Personnel Board. And if you look at the quality of the members that were on that Personnel Board, I believe surely was the one of the heads of the Human Resource Department and handled insurance. And, and, and you look at that, when we're whole private sector and government experience we had within the residents, within our own town, there are those experts. Am I suitable beyond Personnel Board? No. But there are many in town that are. And for years, to say that they were not qualified or that within our own ranks, we didn't have the talent to be professional human resource people, that, that just doesn't do justice for the years of experience and service that those people provided with the wishes. We tried this, we've tried to make a change in twenty-eighteen. And in my personal opinion, it has not worked out well for the town. And this, you know, the previous speaker really is addressing the next petition, which is the establishment of Personnel Board, which really needs to happen as well, if this one passes. So, they're kind of one in the same here.
Listen.
Thanks, Mr. Shane.
Janice Shane, Rodney Road. So, um, I have some concerns with this article, which again pertains to the Town Administrator job description. Um, to be clear, and, and maybe I'm missing something, but this article does not have to do with the Personnel Board. This is specifically for changes that we're looking to make to the Town Administrator role. So, I'm worried that the changes to the bylaw are going to have long-term impacts beyond our current Town Administrator. So, we want to make sure that our positions are on trend with T A positions in the area. It is twofold concern. We want more professionalism across the Board. Um, I don't think that seating the way some of these responsibilities does that for us. And I'm a little bit concerned about the changes that are listed that make it harder for the Board of Selectmen to dismiss the T A. And I'm, I'm not saying that's something we're even thinking about, but long-term, and this was mentioned by legal counsel, um, when we had Mark Terry in, that the way it's written, Sixty-Eight, Twenty-One, it adds a lot more, there are a lot more defined roadblocks in the way if there is an issue. Um, it makes it very litigious. It's going to make it very expensive. Um, and that's, that's a thing, again, long-term, that I'm, I'm kind of worried about. The other thing is, when we list the specific qualifications in the bylaw, we make it more difficult to effectively negotiate salary by memorializing what the base requirements are. It makes it more difficult for us when we have to go find a new T A to say, you know, what those requirements should be because we've got it memorialized in a bylaw as opposed to updating it based on what the market trends are, what the area calls for. I just, I think that maybe there are elements of this that are just going to make it more difficult going forward, and I would ask people to vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Shane. Additional discussion on Article Fourteen? Oh, Miss Smith. Somebody at the back start pointing to my left. Wait, I keep doing this.
Lori Smith, Pierpont Road. I would have to say that I believe the Personnel Department and Committee had a purpose in the past. However, with things and how they're moving, I think it's better in the form we have right now with someone that's in the town hall every day. I know, um, no, to my knowledge, no town employee had been asked what our feelings were on this. I think one was asked yesterday. In my own opinion, I think the town employees are doing much better now under their current, um, way that it's set up. We've had an outside study group come evaluate the positions, where we've got the wage rate. In the past, the Personnel Department has supported us, but it was to get basically a two percent raise or a two and a half percent raise, and it didn't look at what comparable ones were in the neighboring towns. We're losing employees left and right going to Webster and Chelton, maybe five dollars an hour more just by leaving town and going to another one. So, I would encourage people to stay like we have right now. The other thing is, it's only affecting a few town employees, you're probably looking at like nineteen. This wouldn't affect any of the union employees. So it's affecting a small thing, I think it's working good as it is right now. And no disrespect to the people that were on Personnel Committee, they volunteered their time, they did a great job. However, everything is changing, you've got to keep up the certification, the laws are changing. And while they might have been on top of it when they were in the workforce, things have changed going forward. And I doubt they kept up any certifications and kept up with the changes. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Smith. Any additional discussion of Article fourteen? Way at the back, oh, Mr. Carmenetti.
Thank you, Rich Carmenetti, Forty-Nine Airport Road. With regard to information. I had a hard return mid-morning, and it gave me collector receipts today. We're on a centralized system, so we can find our bearings. There's a flip side to this. Your revenues are not linear. If anything, your expenses aren't very early in the year. And my ability to collect the lion's share of the taxes through the law is later in the year. So I appreciate the need to get better information as soon as possible. There are certain things objectively that are always going to be available, whether it's mandated or not. So it's not necessarily in support of this, it's an aside that the information is here and can be gathered for, for whatever reason. If I could add my own, my own piece to this. You've seen me speak at the selection meeting, there's always an invitation for what I like to call the deeper dive. You have Town Council here because we're, we're dealing with a little bit different items. But anytime something comes up on a selection's agenda, there's always that invitation for a little bit more detail. Anybody who knows me, I can put somebody to sleep in about ten seconds if they're up to play.
I'm sorry, what?
Yes, thank you, yes, and try the deal. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Carmenetti. Any additional discussion on Article fourteen? Seeing none will move Article fourteen as amended, all right, I've got to stop doing that, Mr. Rendaza. Article fourteen was amended, so that amendment is Article fourteen. We're going to move Article fourteen to a vote at this time. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yea.
The moduli, the voice modulation from the back is balanced out with the voice modulation at the front. We have to raise hands. This is a majority vote. Hold your hands up for yea, please. I'm going to have like, we have like thirty, kind of thirty, so. All opposed? The motion is passed. I need to filter through my pages to get to Article fifteen, sorry. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the Dudley General Bylaws, Chapter Seventy-Four Personnel Policies and Procedures pursuant to match general law, Chapter Forty-One, Section One-O-eight A and One-O-eight C Personnel Policies and Procedures, by amending Sections One Purpose, Section Three Personnel Board Established, Section Four Responsibilities of Personnel Board, Section Five Method, Section Six Human Resources Manager, Section Seven Severability, and Section Eight Annual Hourly Sickly Buyback, as shown below, with deleted language stricken through with added language in bold, or take any other action relative there. To, Mr. May?
FAA will, for the petitioner, promote.
Mr. Breyer?
This is part two, I'd like to make a motion to accept the article with the following amendments. I'd like to strike Section Seventy-Four dash three, where it says Personnel Board Established, Part C, by striking the following paragraph. In the event that the Personnel Board does not have enough permanent volunteer members to maintain quorum, the Board of Selectmen, Chairman, the FAA, Chairman, the Town Oderator, that order asserts temporary members of the Personnel Board until such time as voluntarily be appointed as permanent member of the Personnel Board. So we're striking that, and simply replacing that with the sentence, a quorum will exist when a majority of the appointed members are present. And that's taken from the FAA side. And then, I need to correct the title that Labor Council pointed out. In Section Seventy-Four dash four, Responsibilities of Personnel Board, section H, where it says Chapter One-O-five E, it should be, change that to Chapter One-Fifty E. And then amend Section Seventy-Four dash six by striking out the entire paragraph concerning the Human Resource Managers in the annual report, where it's annual report, Human Resource Managers shall annually prepare and submit to Town Administrator and Personnel Department a report that shall contain all matters pertaining to that department as required by the Town Administrator. So that also should be stripped out.
So, we've got the motion on the floor to make an amendment to Article fifteen as presented. Do we have a second? We have a second, is there any discussion on amending Article fifteen as proposed? Seeing none, we'll move the discussion of the amendment to a vote. We are not voting on Article fifteen, only the amendment. All in favor of amending?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Mr. Breyer?
Thank you for that. I'd like to make a motion to pass Article fifteen as amended. This is the part two of the two-part series here. And it probably would have made more sense to have Personnel Board Article first, before the Town Administrator one, but it just so happened to work out this way. As one of the previous speakers said, that, you know, we have to move forward. And we feel this is moving forward. And the reason why is, we didn't simply go to rescind the previous Town Administration. We saw that there was a deep value with having an HR manager in the day-to-day operations within the town. Unfortunately, we have a tremendously qualified individual fulfilling that role today. We said, so how do we blend the best of a collaborative environment with someone who's on the spot, day-to-day? And that's why we did a little bit more, and, and that's why we added the HR manager and actually put it in the bylaw. The previous Personnel Board didn't have an HR manager, they were the HR manager, they were the Personnel Board. Under the new format here, we have the best of both worlds, we have a collaborative environment with a bunch of professionals that will have HR backgrounds. I think you're going to be surprised at the pool of candidates that do step forward here. You're going to have more people than you think applying to this, and they all will be very well qualified. And I think to have them, you know, navigating, right, the state and federal stuff, you know, all these different processes, and being a mutual body, working in collaboration with the HR manager that's there on a daily basis, is a win-win for Teamwork. And if it doesn't work out, we can come back next year and fix it. Right? But it will work out, I have no doubt about it. Okay, thank you. Over to both of us to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Breyer. Additional discussion for Article fifteen, Mr. Sullivan?
So, again, I think we all are trying to get to the same place, and right now, I think we are at that place. Some of the things they talked about, the petitioners. Personnel Board would be, paraphrasing, in challenging job classifications. We already did that. We had a grant-funded professional corporation commit to do that in the town, they did it in twenty-twenty. Personnel Board at the time, forward to its second. There was, it was recommended by the Personnel Board for nine twenty-twenty, final approval by the Personnel Board, August of twenty-twenty-three. And what that did, it grade leveled every job in town. Again, a professional outside engineer, including, up to and including positions that require bachelor's degree or higher, and equivalent master craftsman levels. So, for example, when you get a person, a highness superintendent would necessarily have a business management degree, but he'd have all licenses. So we did that. We had a Human Resources Board, had a Edward Collins, the UMass. A lot of towns had it, I heard someone say before, a lot of towns have Personnel Boards. So in this one here, it came through a community contact board. Again, Grant, we brought in an outside professional. They, they came through, and they, they went through everything we had in town, they found shortcomings. They came back, and they said, "This is what you should do to streamline your process." Again, professional, put online, you could request it from the, from the Town Administrator's office or Town Clerk, or Board of Detention. We did a, as part of that, every, every employee in town got a chance to talk to the person that did the report. So that means everybody, elected officials, town, uh, town employees, sat down, they went over their statutory obligations, they wrote what their job entails, what their direction. Again, I'm not criticizing or looking back, saying the Personnel Board in the past didn't have a function it probably did. But we brought in professionals, through grants in class autonomy. We also had a Town Dudley Employee Handbook revised one-eight twenty-twenty-four. Again, the way the process works. Public hearing, input comes in, changes are made. So we have done things, again, with the outside professional help. And I'll accept the petitioner's belief that we're going to get good people, because I think most people are good, they have the good intentions. Town Council, Attorney Mandaz, oh, our Labor Council, Mark Terry, came to the public hearing, had to paraphrase what he said publicly. He's been our Town Council for Labor for twenty-five years. He's got thirty years' experience at Strick Labor Lot. The trend in virtually every municipality is to do away from the people that they can meet once a month if they need them. We can't get a quorum, I know the petitioner wanted to change the way the quorum is achieved. Town Council, who we all pay, the gentleman before was talking about how much money we spend on things. Twenty-five years, he said the trend is going one hundred percent the other way, and I summation. Again, he had a bunch of things that he spoke out against. He recommends against the adoption of the amendment to the Town Administrator, the Personnel Bylaw. The infringe upon statutory granted powers are inconsistent with trends in modern municipal government, as referenced in the Collins Report, as I said earlier. They go well beyond the petitioner's stated purpose, and in many ways are impractical. His assessment is, in fact, they will not be approved at the Office of Attorney General. Furthermore, if they are approved, it creates significant disruption to town operation as detrimental to its ability to uneffectively recruit, retain quality, quality employees. Similar to what they, the Speaker up here said, and the Speaker down here. So I'm asking for the board to not accept the petition as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Scotty?
Scotty Scotty, Eight Catherine Street, current Chair of the Water Supply Commission. As I heard this all coming up over the last couple, couple months, I thought, Personnel Board is probably, could, could be a good thing. After being able to read through this, I have some serious concerns. They'll be responsible for employee onboarding, training, and development. So this group is going to determine how our employees are trained. What about, for, I, I, I speak only for the Water Supply Commission. Two of our employees would be the subject of this. One of them being our superintendent. So this board is going to determine how that person has to be trained. Employee safety and health programs. You're getting into areas, the, uh, job classification, wage and salary rates. We're getting into areas, you want to take and put all of this into a volunteer-appointed board, and instead of putting them in the hands of professionals. I, I, I have a problem with that. And, and the main problem would be some, some, summarized this way. I have a fairly decent relationship with the town model, this is the Starches. So I have a conversation with him over coffee, and I get him to use his appointment on me. I get myself appointed to this Personnel Board. You know what I am to the town of Dudley? I'm a liability. I don't know Personnel Law, I don't know safety, I, I do know safety and health. Job safety and health. But I, I know nothing about Personnel Law. The stuff I know about Personnel Law, I learned twenty years ago, thirty years ago. I don't belong in that position. Appointed people don't belong taking care of this stuff. This stuff should be taken care of by professionals. And for that, I'm going to make a motion to pass this over until the spring Town Meeting, so we can talk about what the Personnel Board should do, and, and get it done right, and get it done right for the town of Dudley. So I, I make a motion to pass this over until this spring Town Meeting.
Motion to amend? Did I hear a second? I did hear a second motion, but amend, second, it to pass over the article. Discussion to pass over to the spring twenty-twenty-five meeting. Original petitioner, Mr. Breyer?
I urge you to not pass over this. Everything that the previous speaker had spoken about is exactly what the Personnel Board would do. We'd have, they'd have the same access to professionals, they'd have the same access to getting grants. I would ask, who in our town today has got all of those qualifications to discuss? Nobody. Nobody. And the Personnel Board, don't let the scare tactics fool you, they're scare tactics. The Personnel Board has worked, it will work, combined with the Human Resources
Combined with a human resource manager, which takes care of the day-to-day operations. All of these duties that they're trying to scare you with were in the bylaw prior to them modifying it in October of 2018. It's word for word. It was in the old bylaw. And if we simply rescinded it, that's what would be in place.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Any additional discussion related to passing over the article to the spring 2025? Seeing now, Mr. Fox. Sorry. Left side again. I'm still awake. Excellent.
If you pass over this article, that means this article is dead and cannot be readdressed for three years. If you pass it over for further information, then it can go to the spring town meeting. Am I correct?
I'm going to look at town council. We're both shaking our heads, so since we're both shaking our heads, I think that that's inaccurate.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
I'm Mike Leo. I still live in Fort Michael Bay. And I don't think we should pass this over. I think we should vote on it tonight. And nobody likes to have power taken from them. I think that there's lots of discussion here and among citizens where there could be lots of discussions about lacks of confidence in decisions that have been made by the people who are talking, you know, saying that they're professionals or capable. In some ways, it feels like from the leadership in our town over a period of years has kind of been like a death by a thousand paper cuts. And again, nobody likes to lose power. This takes some power away from some people, puts it back into citizens of this town. Always others, all will be others. The quote-unquote "professionals," that's such an arbitrary term. As Mr. Brier said, there's an amazing amount of talent in this town. Capable people who are capable of making decisions that don't just benefit somebody for the short term, but look beyond for generations. And there is, I would believe, a level of short-sightedness traditionally in some of the thinking, some of the voting, some of the behaviors, some of the attitudes of some of the current administration. And I was encouraged to tell these people to look closely at this and to say, this is a positive change. This puts power out of professionals and into capable citizens, and that's really what government ought to be. So I advocate to not pass this over and to support Mr. Brier. Thank you.
Thanks. Still here, folks, because we're not done. There's a long way to go, my friends. So if you're applauding at 11:30. Any additional discussion? I'm joking. We've done way before that. At least we'll suspend discussion at 10:30. Is there any additional discussion for passing over? Seeing now, move the discussion for passing over to a vote. An affirmative vote means that we do pass it over, and an opposed vote means that we continue discussing it tonight. All in favor of passing over?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Yeah, I think no one's arguing here. All right, back to the original article discussion. Is there any additional discussion for Article 15? Mr. Shane.
Janice Shane, again. So I felt like when we discussed this at our joint meeting a couple of weeks ago, it was a really good conversation, but unfortunately, it only solidified my belief that we do still have more work to do if we're going to make these changes. There is a very big gap between changing the language the board's mission is to establish or assist in establishing. Most other personnel boards and personnel board bylaws that I've read across the state are advisory in nature. And that means that they have a voice and they have a seat at the table, but they have to pay attention to everyone else as well. It really makes me nervous that we are looking to shift work that should be paid and should be done by employees to volunteers. And that's not because I don't think that the volunteers are capable. I absolutely agree with the speaker who said that there are people in the community who are capable of doing this work. And if that's the case, we should be, I'm sorry, paying for that work. As of right now, it's included in the job description for both the town administrator and the assistant town administrator by way of personnel director and human resources manager. So human resources as a function attempts to dedicate resources to the town's greatest asset in the workplace, which are the employees. And that's one of the findings that was in one of the reports that we've done over the last few years. The town has worked on trying to establish new petition-grade characteristics and new, you know, pay scales. And they haven't done it in a vacuum, but with extensive classification studies from DJI. You know, the authority granted in this bylaw, in these changes, would allow the personnel board to unilaterally change the metrics we use today and that were developed and paid for by professionals. Work that was completed over the course of three and a half years between January 2020 and August 2023. I think that shifting the responsibilities from a personnel director and HR manager to a volunteer board is shifting daily attention. We have professional staff right now in the assistant town administrator and town administrator available to employees while they are on the clock. This petition seeks to transition the personnel director duties to a board that may need, once or twice a month, to discuss pressing, oftentimes sensitive issues. And these meetings would be subject to open meeting laws. That for me, as an employee, if you told me that I had to bring my concerns to a board that's recorded, because open meeting laws are what they are, I'm less hesitant to do that. In the model that we have now, they can approach their managers. They can approach their department head. They can come to the board of selectmen or any of the selectmen if they have an issue with someone in the administrator's office. There's a channel for that. This doesn't address that. It doesn't make it easier, because we're, you know, spreading out that information. I think the last thing that I would want to say about this is just that I agree with the personnel board bylaw that we currently have today. Those changes that were made in 2018 and 2019. I think that there is a place for citizens to be involved. And, you know, using the personnel board as a screening committee to help department heads find new talent. I love that, and that's what the current bylaw allows for. But these changes just go way too far. It puts too much power into a volunteer board, and honestly, like, that's a lot of work for five people that are not being paid ultimately. So I would hope, would ask that people vote against this. And if we could take a look at trying to make the personnel board more collaborative going forward based on the bylaw we have right now, that's something that we should do.
Thanks, Mr. Shane. Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Zakowski, sir.
I'm not going to change any decisions here with your question.
Question's been moved, and I'm inclined to move to a vote. All in favor of Article 15? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
If I say do it again, you're just going to yell. Let's just do the hands, so I've got it clear. All in favor? Aye. And all opposed? Nay. That motion has passed, 69 to 48, exceeding the majority. Just for one point of, it's more for personal clarification. Just Mr. Zakowski's example of, I can be bought with a coffee. Totally not applicable. I really can't be bought, but I'd be happy to sit down and have something else tonight. Ms. Smith. Yes?
I would like to request the reconsideration of Article 7. I think it's in the best interest of the town. If we don't get an affirmative vote tonight, we do lose the grant. The kids will never get another playground.
Motion's been made to reconsider. Is there a second?
Aye.
Motion's been made and seconded. Motion to reconsider, so we're all educated, is to determine if we will bring back the question at this meeting tonight. This is the time that it will be brought back if it is accepted to reconsider. Discussion on motion to reconsider. Ms. Smith, you're the original. Do you have anything additional to add beyond? Yeah, okay. And then I'll come to you, Ms. Leo. Sorry.
I really think this is in the best interest of the town in order to reconsider this. A lot of time and effort has gone into it. From what I heard tonight with the discussion, a lot of it was on the splash pad, which we had gotten the assurances from the recreation committee that there'll be a public hearing. If people really don't want the splash pad, that can be taken out. But we really need to put some money into our town. It's a small amount when you look at how much we're going to be getting for the grant. Our children don't have, you know, places to go during the day. It's a small thing that we can do for them, make the town better. You want to be able to draw people in, people we're talking about for the house values. If you have this and there's things to do in the town, it's going to raise the value of your houses. So I think it's only in the best interest of the town and our children. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Leo.
Yeah, Mike Leo, Fort Michael Bay. I homeschool my kids in this town. There's a thousand places to bring your kids in this town. So to use, we need it for the kids, this or that, that's craziness and that's pandering. Also, people voted for this and then, like, had to leave. So if you're going to reconsider, you would need to recount everybody, get a new quorum, and then to vote, right? Because people had voted, and it was done, and then maybe people went home. So would that be fair? Is there a law that says that even if it's voted on, you have to stay till the end of your vote, right? Have that changed?
The quorum is intact, a minimum 51 required by town bylaw.
So we still have everybody. There's enough people here based on people that left. It just seems weird that a vote can happen twice.
Yeah, the allowance of a motion to reconsider is totally appropriate on the evening that it's being reconsidered. Yes, sir.
Richard Clark Airport Road. I'd like to know who here is not embarrassed by what we have sitting next to Tom Ball now. I mean, if that isn't an embarrassment, I don't know what it is. I mean, if we don't do this now, when are we going to do it? We're talking about what was $380,000 several years ago. Anybody here think that's gone down versus 208, 204,000, approximate number? Again, if we don't do it now, when? If not now, when? Simple question.
Thanks, Mr. Clark. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Caitlin Rosinas Hansen of Cardinal Drive. I guess I just want to say something. So I started on the agricultural commission. And I feel like a lot of people don't, and this is not a dickhead, I'm not a floss. Don't understand what our commissions do, that they're kind of a branch of, between the people and the government. I mean, we have these people that are appointed to serve on these commissions to give their best interest. Typically, there's a reason they're on there. Guys serve on the I commission because I have a farming background. So when people come to you with these recommendations, it is still possible for the public to come to these meetings. These meetings are completely public. They're completely open. So people can come to them and weigh in on this. I just, I, as a future mother myself, really want to make sure that this doesn't die because we're going to pay something to remove the playground anyway. So we might as well put forth, I mean, I can think of so many other things to spend $280,000 on that could be worse. And I just, I really think that people have to put some trust in these commissions and put some trust in our recreation commission and know that your voice will be considered and heard. Because the reason we're on these commissions are for the betterment of the town. We don't do it just for giggles. We volunteer time on purpose. So I just want to make sure people understand that.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Yes.
Hi, Susan Corney of Cardinal Drive. I actually came here tonight to vote this down because I was really concerned about the costs, the ongoing costs of water, of maintenance, of everything for this splash pad. That was my main thing. I would love, more than anything, for this town to have a nice playground. I think the splash pad maybe just goes a little too far for me. Because, you know, I'm looking into my time in years. I don't want to see my taxes skyrocket. Yes, I want the kids to have a nice playground. I think the splash pad goes too far. But if you're telling me that, okay, we can go without the splash pad and just do the playground, have a nice playground for the kids, for, you know, whether Oxford, whoever else comes, that's fine. My reason for coming is that I thought, okay, a splash pad's just going too far, and this town can't afford the upkeep on that. A playground is a whole different story. But if this goes through, I think that the town really needs to consider who's going to upkeep. Don't let it turn into the town beach where there's trash everywhere. You know, there's got to be a plan for who's going to take care of it. But my vote was actually turned from a no to a yes. As long as we can get rid of that splash pad, that I think is just going to push this too far for the town to be able to continue with the upkeep.
Thank you. Mr. Siggenavage, then we'll jump back out to the audience. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, can we modify the the motion to reconsider to include there will be no splash pad? That seems to be the hot button. Can we have the petitioner in the second here?
I would prefer us to discuss the motion to reconsider and then entertain a conversation about that and the article itself.
Thank you. I just didn't want it to get lost.
Yes, sir.
Dana Kenny, Dudley Solomon Drug.
Dana Kenny, Dudley Sound and Drug. I believe we have to spend seven-hundred-thousand due to the eighty percent for the grant, correct? So it's irrelevant whether we put a splash pad or put sixty-five screens over there. We still have to spend that money, correct? To get to four-hundred-and-ninety-eight, we have to spend seven-hundred-and-forty, correct?
Yes.
So it's irrelevant what we build, we still have to get that money. If we thought, yes, we have to spend seven-hundred-thousand dollars.
Well, yes, sir.
Mine is for the grant, to get that. So if we build something less, like people are thinking, it's less, we can't do it that way. Correct?
I'll start, so if you have any else on this one, Mr. Shane?
So my understanding about the way that this works and the way this article is written, and Mr. Carmini, I'm sure, will jump up and tell me if I am wrong, is that we need to have a funding mechanism for the whole project, even though we got a grant for eighty percent.
Or sixty?
Seventy percent, sorry, seventy percent. So the grant is, I mean, the amount of money that we're going to spend on it is the two-oh-eight number that's been mentioned tonight. That's what the town is in for. But the town may not have to pay the full two-hundred-and-eight depending on, depending on, you know, donations with, between donations and other funds that have been raised. It may not be coming directly out of our budget. If we don't move on this, eventually, when we have to do something on, we have to do something with the playground, it's going to come out of our budget anyway. So at least we could get it replaced with something better.
Additional discussion on reconsidering? Yes, Carmini, and then all the way to the back row.
Kathy Carmini, Forty-Nine Airport Road. I don't know if that truly answered the question I had about the grant, and maybe someone has information about the grant. If we go back and we do vote this forward and we can take less money if we are able to take off the splash pad, would the grant then come down in price in proportion to that amount? So if now we're only spending five-hundred-thousand dollars on a, on a playground, our grant would come down proportionally, but so would our money that we need to pay? Right. Is that written to the grant that way? I just want to make sure of that.
Thank you. I think that's what people are trying to make in.
Mr. Riddler?
So the, the seventy percent was based on the application package, which the total number was set before. So if we did, if we reduced it, you would get seventy percent where the reduction amount, let's suppose, five-hundred-thousand bucks, you get seventy percent of five-hundred-thousand bucks. But we can fill up the rest of the grant without using a water feature, you know, if that's necessary. If we wanted to continue on and add more features to it, we can do that too. It all depends on, it all depends on the rule of Recreation Commission based on public engagement.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Jeff Peany, Prospect Avenue. I spent eleven years in and have a National Guard. This thought just popped into my head when I was listening to everybody speak. The United Mass National Guard, I get tasked to do a lot of state projects. We built a soccer field in Brookfield, baseball field in Sturbridge, and another thing for Ron Burton's, Andrean Village in Hubbardston. Has anybody considered reaching out to Mass National Guard to maybe offset the cost of this? I mean, it's an option. I was enough company, one of the first competent engineers out of Milford, Mass for eleven years.
So again, as the funding, again, I can't address that specifically, I wasn't in those conversations, but we're looking to re-enter into a conversation about the financing of the project, the scope and sequence of the project, how it gets carried out, what vendors are utilized, how it's installed, all that's a part of the public process moving forward through gathering our quotes, talking to our vendors, and going ahead and figuring out how we're going to get the labor mechanism completed.
Right, exactly. State labors, they get paid by the state, they're going to get paid anyway, and it's basically, you know...
Your, your point's noted, without a doubt.
Right, so just maybe figure out how to reach through the channels to the National Guard leadership.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Yes, sir. Discussion about motion to reconsider Article VII. Thank you. I saw something in your eye. Mr. Knoyer.
Good evening, Jen Knoyer, West Dudley Road. In response to the National Guard, I don't know, I just know that if this goes through, when it gets to that point, it would have to go out to bid because it is a municipal project. As to who has the ability to bid on it, I don't know, but I do know that that is the process. This plan is not etched in stone by no means. The Recreation Commission would have a public hearing to consider everybody's input, what they would like to see in it. And if they have an issue with the splash pad, so far, that has been a concern. I can only speak for myself, but as a general, the board has discussed, it's been a concern. And we, I don't think there would be a problem hearing everyone out by any means and coming up with something that would make everybody happy so that we have an area for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knoyer. Additional discussion for reconsidering Article VII. Seeing none, we'll put this to a majority vote, all in favor of reconsidering Article VII, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Hands up. I know where it's going to go, okay? Hands up. Hands up for yes. Thank you. All opposed to reconsider, hands up, please. Okay, again, the motion to reconsider has passed overwhelmingly, thanks to the nays for good vocal cords, I guess. We'll bring Article VII back to the forefront. For purposes of this, I will go ahead and read the article, it's been a while. "To see if the town of Dudley will vote to borrow the sum seven-hundred-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten dollars or other such sum to make repairs and expand the usable area of the upper fields located at Richard Carmini's Senior Memorial Playground, including any incidental and related costs, with the exact boundaries thereof, to be determined and to dedicate such land for active recreational purposes under Mass General Law chapter forty-five, section fourteen, and to meet such appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow such sum under Mass General Law, chapter forty-four, subsection seven or eight, or any other source of authority, and to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit on behalf of the town of Dudley applications for any and all grants deemed available and/or necessary under the Urban Self-Help Act, three-oh-one CMR five-point-zero-zero, or otherwise being further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any and all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or appropriate on behalf of the town to affect said project or take any other action relative thereto." Mr. May.
The FAA recommends you pass this article and I saw both.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion continuing for Article VII? Yes, sir, Mr. Dryer. First hand, first seen.
I'd like to propose an amendment to the article where it says, "To see if the town of Dudley will vote tomorrow," I'd like to add the words "no more than," then it could continue on to the sum of seven-hundred-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten dollars. And then on the fourth sentence down where it says "Senior Memorial Playground, including any incidental and related costs, comma, with no splash pad, comma, with the exact boundaries," that's the motion.
So we've got an amendment motion on the floor for Article VII. We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the amendment to the language to add, and I'm going to butcher this directly, borrow no more than, and a statement about the splash pad that they have in the record. Okay, Mr. Sullivan.
I believe, Mr. Dryer, maybe the permission of the person who made the original move, amended voting, the person who seconded it to accept the original motion also. That's the difference. The mover doesn't want to change it, or the seconder doesn't want to second it, and has to be pulled up by a different motion. I agree. They could amend that motion.
Amendment, amendment by vote, yes. Yeah. Yeah, we're going to be discussing the amendment related to the language of no more than the sum indicated in the original motion and the information about the no splash pad. Is there any discussion about that amendment? Mr. Carmini?
Good evening, Richard Carmini, Forty-Nine Airport Road. Expect to see eggs on my house when I get back there. To the previous speaker, I'd like to be able to establish, if there's a limit imposed, I don't have any objection with it. The makeup is not mentioned in the playground grant. Discussion, in my mind, should be at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting to lay out a process. If it's not the like, the next meeting, it should be memorialized at this date, at this time. This is a public process that we're involved in. There are more than one entity concerned about this. And if there should be a splash pad or there shouldn't be a splash pad, it's moot point. We're looking to address the funding mechanism, at least that's how I see this, that's how I'd like to see it go forward. Like to see that last portion about what's included be addressed at a separate time.
Thank you, Mr. Carmini. Mr. Dryer?
My fear is that if we don't put the specific language with no splash pad in the motion, that it's going to be defeated, and that's why I, I ordered to keep it in.
Just my two cents, moderator hats off. I, I don't, I, I agree with Mr. Carmini about the funding language. I do disagree with the design element. There is a formal public process related to all these design elements. Public can weigh in, the board takes in all that data and information and goes ahead and makes the best plan. If there were some type of donation from a business that said, hey, we've got a water reclamation pump that y'all could use at the splash pad, that's going to probably change some minds in here that the town isn't utilizing water from the main. I don't think we should be limiting, I don't think we should be short-sighted. We were that back in twenty-fourteen or so when we scared away an adventure park from going up on top of Dresser Hill, and they're making a lot of money in there, the local community, and a lot of businesses are taking home bank. We made a huge mistake at something that simple. I'd hate to do something here for our kids and our families, and I'd love to get more kids into this district, but we're seeing drops in enrollment because folks are concerned about the environment of Dudley. Moderator, head back on. Any additional discussion? Yes, on the left.
Hi, Dave Sullivan, Four, I'd like place. Just a couple of items. Does the seven-hundred-four-thousand top number also include the dismantle and removal of the old thing?
Yes, it does.
And again, I, I don't think the money is the super issue. I mean, the grant has, I think some of the biggest things, the grant means we have to let everybody in, and this is Dudley going to be on the hook for maintaining that facility for a lot of property, I think, if it's going to be great, everybody will come. I'm just saying, that's, to me, that's just a few things. Again, someone had said this before, we do a lot of work through public maintaining things. The playground we have is a prime example, right? So I didn't see anything about the funding and how we were going to make sure if you were going to do this, that it is going to stay at a level of, you know, proper maintenance and stuff, is that in the fine print somewhere? Or we're going to have to go to, what I'm worried about is we go back to the town and all of a sudden, you know, I heard numbers of four, six thousand a year, and if all of a sudden it goes up to ten, fifteen, twenty thousand a year, and then you go to a vote to go get the money, and we say, no, you can't, there's no money, then the playground cinsin rides. I just didn't hear anything in that area that would make me think that we could do a good job going forward. I didn't see. Is it there?
No, see, that's a really good question, and I think we need some more information on that. However, I do want to direct the conversation back to our motion on the amendment to include language about borrowing no more than, and the playground design to not include a splash pad. Mr. Leo.
I think that at this point, I don't know enough about the legal process to make a motion to carry this over to the spring meeting, nor do I know if there's a timeline on when we have to come up with a final decision as whether we as a town say, yes, we'll take up this grant, we've owed this, or no. There's been no discussion on like a timeline or a deadline for that. At this point, while the reintroduction of reconsideration of this is, I guess, legal to be in almost the third hour of a meeting where people have clearly left, seems to me like a bending of the democratic process. So I would, I would say that at best, being that this is kind of now being cobbled together, because even that dollar amount is based on the splash pad design, which might be changed now based on if we don't want the splash pad, if we want something less, and we end up putting out less money to get a less, you know, seventy percent. Maybe we get three-hundred-thousand and we put out almost seventy percent of that. But it seems at this point, this article is now being cobbled together where it's not really even sure where it's going, and it needs more consideration. They worded differently, and I don't think that we're in a spot to do it right here and right now. And I think this should at least be carried over to the spring meeting, if possible, if that doesn't over, you know, out deadline us for putting in a bid or whatever it is, so that people... uh, so that people who made their vote and, and left, ultimately, who knows, uh, have a chance to actually have their, their voice heard legitimately. So, thank you.
Thanks. Well, Ms. Knoyer's coming up. In terms of procedure, just so we're clear, we typically have, uh, a rule that we will not take up any new business after ten thirty, uh, which is crystal clear in every meeting except for, interestingly enough, I didn't state it at the start of this one. Uh, but you can go back and check me out on YouTube, uh, Town Moderator Dudley. Very clear about procedure.
Thank you, Jen Knoyer again. Um, to answer two of his questions. There is a timeline with the grant. You have so much time to get the engineering done, so much time to send it out to bid, and the work has to be done by a certain time in order to get granted the entire grant. So yes, we were awarded a grant with a timeline, which is why we're here. The design of the playground, the grant maximum amount was five hundred thousand dollars that you could receive. So obviously, it was designed so that we could try to get the maximum amount of grant. It was designed with the splash pad in there because of the maximum amount of the grant. By no means is that design the final design. Before we can go to an actual design, we have to have money to go forward with it. So when applying for the grant, the thought was, well, let's apply for all of it. Let's get as much as we can so that we can get as much of a playground for the community that we could. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Knoyer. Uh, additional discussion on the motion to, uh, the motion to make amendment to the language to include, uh, borrow no more than and a splash pad language? Seeing none, we'll push this to a vote. Uh, all in favor of the amendment to include those two components? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And that's a clear aye. The motion's been, uh, the article has now been amended to include borrow no more than and eliminate splash pad in summary. Discussion on Article Seven. Seeing none, we will move Article Seven, I think we've done a very good job of getting into it tonight. Uh, we'll move Article Seven to revoke. Uh, all in favor of Article Seven?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
I think that's a pretty clear two-thirds. Motion passes? Is there any additional business tonight? My son is absolutely waxing the, uh, my clock in fantasy football. Uh, that's the only thing I wanted to share, is this meeting's been a pleasure compared to that. I have a motion to adjourn. Motion's been seconded, this requires no vote, but turn your clickers on the way.